Mr. Duffy.
Present.
Mr. Thomas.
Here.
Ms. Zimmerman.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, we'll begin with the consent agenda. We have Board of Supervisor meeting minutes from January 16th. And also, we have Treasurers and Cashflow Report, and that is Consent Agenda. Can I entertain a motion to accept the Consent Agenda?
Make that motion.
And a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Call for the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. Okay. Next up on the agenda, Item 2, Presentation. First up, we're having a presentation to Corporal Thomas Mummy in recognition of his 30 years of service with the Lower Providence Township Police Department. Wow, it's quite an honor. And Bud, you're gonna take care of that for me?
Oh, I thought you were going to join.
Okay.
Yes, you will.
You take the ring?
He doesn't care.
Please. Welcome, 30 years, wow. Not too many 30-year fellows around anymore, are there? We're lucky to have you. Okay, Corporal Thomas A. Mummy, 30th Anniversary Presentation. Thomas A. Mummy is a graduate of the Norristown Area High School and holds an Associate's Degree from Montgomery County Community College. He began his law enforcement career as a police officer with the West Norton Township Police Department in June of 1979. He graduated from the Pennsylvania State Police Academy Southeastern Training Center in November of 1979. While with the West Norton Police, excuse me, while with the West Norton Township Police Department, he was awarded two distinguished unit citations and was named Police Officer of the Year in 1982 by the Norristown Exchange Club. On November 14th, 1983, he was sworn in as police officer with the Lower Providence Township Police Department and was assigned to the Patrol Division. He is a graduate of the Pennsylvania State Police Supervisor In-Service Training Posit Program. And in 2003, Tom was promoted to his present rank of Corporal. Over his 30-year tenure with Lower Providence Township, he has received numerous letters of commendation, along with two distinguished unit citation, and has been awarded the department's highest honor, the Commendation for Valor. Additionally, Corporal Mummy was one of the inaugural recipients of the Montgomery County District Attorney's Medal of Honor, Medal of Valor, excuse me. Corporal Mummy served for six years as the President of the Montgomery County Lodge of the Fraternal Order of Police. He is presently serving on the Board of Trustees of the Grand Lodge of Pennsylvania Fraternal Order of Police. He also serves on the Montgomery County Police Officers Memorial Committee and the Pennsylvania Law Enforcement Memorial Foundation. Public service has been an attribute of Tom and his family, as evidenced by his 40-year involvement as a volunteer firefighter with the Jefferson Fire Company, which has garnered him a life member status. And he is also a life member of Lower Providence Volunteer Fire Company. Tom's wife Janet is in the medical field. His daughter Valerie is an emergency medical technician. And his son Scott is a decorated veteran of multiple tours in Iraq as a member of the United States Army. And his other son Brad is a decorated police officer with the Philadelphia Police Department. In recognition and appreciation for 30 years of service that Corporal Mummy has provided Lower Providence Township, the Board of Supervisors would like to present Corporal Mummy with this token of our appreciation. Thank you. That's quite a lot. You kept me busy. Hope it's the right.
I hope so.
It might be a piggy ring.
I'll leave an impression now. Nice, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, we do appreciate all your, many years of service. Thank you, Bud.
Thanks, Ms. Sekman. It really is a pleasure this evening to recognize Tom Mummy for 30 years of service to Lower Providence Township and Lower Providence Township Police Department. Tom and I began adversely the same time in West Norton Township in 1979. And I really appreciate the photograph on the left side of the display. That photograph was taken in January of 1980. And they wear our uniforms in West Norton in January of 1980. That was our patrol squad in 1980. Sergeant Joe Holman, who's in the lower right of the photograph, was a new sergeant, had just been promoted. Joe Bocella, who retired from West Norton as Lieutenant, is in the upper right. Tom Mummy is the upper left, and I'm the lower left. It is a black and white photo, but I want to know why Tom's hair is still the same color as 1980. And mine's significantly grayer. We have worked together for 35 years, and I think that's the explanation. Tom and I have, we've enjoyed some very, very good times together over the 35 years. We've enjoyed some terrifying times together, and I emphasize enjoyed some terrifying times together. And we've had some very sad times together. What I can tell you about Tom Mummy is he is no different today in 2014 than he was when that photograph was taken in January of 1980. His commitment to our profession, his work ethic. He comes to work every, there's three officers in the back of the room that'll test it. There are no light days for Tom, there are days off. There are no easy calls, there are no slough-offs. Every call, he wants to go to every call, he wants to handle every call. His love of this profession is the same today as it was 35 years ago. And as a police chief, and as a colleague, and as a fellow police officer, I truly appreciate that. I think, we don't normally do this, and this is a little bit out of script, but again, with Tom being on the job for 35 years, your body tends to break down, your commitment tends to wane a little bit. But I'm going to present Tom tonight in public something that we normally do in a very low-key way. Tom, in 2013, as he's working on his 35th year, used no sick time. He had perfect attendance, which again, I think speaks to his commitment to this township and to his profession. Tom, thank you very much.
Tom, you can fill in what happened after that photograph.
That photograph in 1980 was a celebration of our first squad. I don't think what we realized was the next day we had day work.
Okay, real quick.
Team building before team building was a word.
We used to, at West Norton, pick each other up in the morning, drop each other off. And I remember Dale Mayberry, who's now Chief of West Norton, picking me up that morning. And on the way, taking him home, there was a little fender bender. And the people were more concerned about me than they were about their fenders. What's wrong with that officer, he doesn't look well. And nah, pass it off. So I take Officer Mayberry home at the time, and I pick up Buddy Carroll. And I still swear to this day, we got up near Dunkin' Donuts, which was at Main and School at that time, and I just felt the urge that I was gonna be sick. And some woman cut me off, but I did make it into the parking lot of Dunkin' Donuts where I proceeded to, I guess the word's vomit. All through the heating ducts and everything else, they put the car down for three days. But that wasn't the best thing, I raced home, my wife Janet. You know, I had to change the shower, change uniform, clean up the vehicle, and I'm racing back. The Chief here, Bud Carroll, at the time, he got picked up by one of the sergeants to take him into work. And I think, I'm gonna get killed when I get into work. Paul Scharf was Chief then at West Norton. Well, what happens with me is the adventure never ends. On the way into work, now I'm gonna clean uniform, somewhat cleaned up car, little odor. I get a man with a gun call in Genardi's, Jeffersonville. And he was wearing a coat and tie, he was wearing a plaid yellow, if I remember right, plaid yellow jacket, I guess it was, and a bright tie, was the description, white male. So, me feeling a little better now, I get there first. And the gentleman was telling the customers that the food was poisoned, and he had a gun, and blah, 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 this was the description. So I run into Genardi's, and if you remember, there's a foyer there, where you run in the door, there's actually an opening there before you get into the main store. And out comes from the inner door, the description, the gentleman. Well, I figure the best, you know, defense is a good offense. So I'm actually lifting this man off the ground and bouncing him off the wall. Trying to get to, you know, turn him around frisking. And I'm, you know, more or less pushing him against the wall, and he keeps screaming, and I can't understand, he says, oh my God, oh my God, I described myself. Who do I have? I'm actually thumping the store manager, because on alarm calls, he's so used to describing himself, he was so nervous, that he actually described himself as the actor. So with that, here I am handcuffing the store manager, saying I got him. In reality, the gentleman turned out to be a mental subject, he did not have a gun. He was dressed in a suit, but not that description. And the Chief at the time, Paul Scharf, and Sergeant Ryan, who since passed, got him around the corner. So it wasn't, now that picture there, you ought to, figures into the story. We go back to the station with the prisoner, not the store manager, the real prisoner. And I'm in the ready room, and Paul Scharf, you know, a photo like that's taken that night, we each got a good-sized photo, but there was a small one, it was put on Ollie the Owl. And Ollie the Owl was kind of like an icon in our department, you could put anything on there. Well, that photo was on there that, the next morning, that photo was there. Paul Scharf keeps storming out of his office at least three times, and he walks over and he keeps looking at Ollie the Owl, he looks at that photo and goes back. And then he comes out and he says, Mommy, you're sick, go home. No, Chief, I'm feeling much better now. And he went home. I did go home that day. So that's one day I did miss. But I don't think the store manager missed me. And I got an experience out of that. And along with that, I just want to thank the residents, supervisors of Lower Providence Township for 30 years of doing a job I love. I love being a street cop. My career's not over yet, I got a couple more years to go. You can hear the groans, I know. And what I'm finding with 30, 35 years in police work is when I get a kid on curfew, underage drinking, something along those lines, I start asking them information, and I keep thinking to myself, I know this name. Well, wait a minute, I think I had your mother and father for the same thing. And now it's getting to the point, I'm scared, that I'm gonna say, your grandfather's so-and-so? So with that, I want to thank everybody for a job I love doing.
All right, Juan? Yeah. Hi, I'm Ms. Jerry, make sure I say.
I'd like Officer Scott Dribblebis to join us.
I'm glad this is a little shorter than. Okay. Officer Scott A. Dribblebis, 5th Anniversary Presentation. Wow, I think I was here when you were hired, one of those days, one of those meetings. Officer Scott A. Dribblebis is a graduate of State College High School and received his Bachelor of Science degree in the Administration of Justice from the Pennsylvania State University. He is a graduate of the Philadelphia Police Academy. He was employed by the Philadelphia Police Department for six years, where he served in the 17th Police District in South Philadelphia, and was assigned to Patrol, and was also assigned to the Five Squad, which focuses on specific crime reduction strategies in each police district. He subsequently served in the 2nd Police District in Northeast Philadelphia. While with the Philadelphia Police Department, he has served as Training Officer and was certified as a Police Bicycle Patrol Officer. On November 24th, 2008, Scott was sworn in as a police officer with the Lower Providence Township Police Department. He has been assigned to the Patrol Division and has also served in the Bicycle Patrol Unit. Scott is also a member of the Montgomery County Drug Task Force. He has received numerous letters of appreciation for his service and has been awarded Accommodation of Merit during his time with the Lower Providence Township Police Department. In recognition and appreciation for the five years of service that Officer Dribblebis has provided to Lower Providence Township, the Board of Supervisors would like to present Officer Dribblebis this token of our appreciation. There you are, Scott, thank you very much.
Scott, I want to congratulate you on completing five years of service. Scott brings a unique mix to the department and to our community. Scott, having grown up in State College, Pennsylvania, brings with him the characteristics and the moral values and the wholesomeness of central Pennsylvania. And then he couples that with the six years of experience that he had in the city of Philadelphia in two of the busiest districts within the city, where he was very, very active and very well-respected. So when he came here to Lower Providence, we really, truly benefited. And we have over the last five years. Not only has the community benefited, but Scott, with only five years on the job here, is considered one of the new guys within the department. But I could tell you that he is one of the more experienced guys, and he shares that experience on the street with our younger officers. We have a number of younger officers, and if they're not learning from Scott, then they're not paying attention. So I appreciate what he brings every single day. I would not want to be a person who has a warrant for them in Lower Providence. Scott hounds the warrant list and isn't afraid to knock on doors and hunt people down. So again, a true asset to our department and a credit to our profession. We're looking forward to many, many more years, Scott. Thank you.
Well, I can't follow Tom, but I did take two sick days last year, sorry, Chief. I just want to thank the Chief and the Board, the residents. It's been a pleasure being here for the five years, and I look forward to hopefully be as liked, if not better, than Tom was.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Item 3, New Business. Next up, we will have discussion and consideration on a resolution establishing policies for professional management services for our Township Pension Plans under Act 44. And John Rice, you're gonna help us with that one?
Yes, I am. What's in front of the Board are two resolutions which would, the first one would establish policies that are required under Act 44. Act 44 was an amendment to the Municipal Pension Plan Funding, Stand and Recovery Act, which established several things, one of which was this, policies and procedures to deal with professionals who are hired to manage your pension funds. There's a fairly rigorous disclosure requirement in the Act. It's designed to, because of the amount of money that's in municipal pension funds, that there are no conflicts. It sets some ethical standards for individuals that would enter into professional service contracts. So that's the first resolution that's in front of you, that's 2014-17. The other one then, the other resolution, 2014-18, establishes a procedure for evaluating applicants. Essentially, and this is not a bidding requirement, it's a disclosure requirement. This is still a professional service. This is not a low-bid issue, it's just an issue of disclosure and to ensure that anyone that's managing the Township's retirement fund is free of any conflicts, and if there are any types of conflicts, it's disclosed to the municipality. So they're the two resolutions that are in front of you. These are required by Act 44. And you have a situation where your existing manager is Morgan Stanley. The individuals that have been working at Morgan Stanley are moving to a different company. So you need to put this in place, set forth, authorize, I'm assuming you'll do that tonight, an RFP, to then, and then evaluate the responses you get to those RFPs.
Okay, so I guess we could take those resolutions separately.
Yes.
First one being 2014-17. And would anybody like to make a motion to approve that resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2014-17.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, do we have any questions from the Board? Questions from the public on this?
I don't have a question, but could you please talk a little louder? I'm having a microphone on this here.
Sorry, Kathy. Which one, me or John Rice? Okay, it's usually me, that's. I'm trying, I'm gonna hang the microphone over my neck. Okay. So now that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, consent by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. Passes. Okay, so then the second item will be, Item 3B, Discussion and Consideration of a Resolution Establishing Evaluation Procedures for the Pension Consultant Services Under Act 44. And so this will be Resolution 2014-18. So do I have a motion to approve that resolution?
Make a motion that we approve Resolution 2014-18.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any questions from the Board? Any questions from the public? None? All those in favor, consent by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to Item 3C, Authorization to Seek Request for Proposals for the Pension Investment Management Services. And Jerry Golis, you're in line.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. As our Solicitor mentioned, our former managers of our pension plans, the Engelbert Rights Team is no longer with Morgan Stanley, they have moved to Burn Wealth Consulting. As such, again, as the Solicitor mentioned, one of the key provisions of Act 44 is to develop procedures for evaluating other pension advisors. And that's what we're here to do tonight, to request. Whether or not we stay with Morgan Stanley and the team that has been assigned to our pension fund management, or we consider Engelbert Rights Team, now with Burn Wealth, or any other number of firms that may wish to bid on this, submit a proposal, we will need to prepare RFP, advertise it as such, and then evaluate, as the Solicitor suggested, per Act 44. So tonight, I'm asking the Board's authorization to advertise an RFP and to create one.
Thank you, Jerry.
You're welcome.
Okay. Okay, can I, would anybody like to entertain a motion for the RFP for Pension Investment Management Services?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Do you have any questions on that? Questions from the public? All those in favor, consent by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Item 3D, Authorization to Prepare and Advertise Road Resurfacing Bid. And Rich, you're gonna help us with that?
Sure, thank you, Chairwoman Ekman. What we're seeking tonight is authorization to prepare our annual bid for road resurfacing. We have budgeted $250,000 associated with road resurfacing. We've originally targeted road reconstruction for Rittenhouse Road. And what we're seeking is authorization to work with Township Engineer Woodrow and Associates to work up a bid and advertise that bid.
Okay, thank you, Rich. I haven't been down Rittenhouse, but after all the snow and ice, I'm sure it's worse than ever. Okay, can we entertain a motion to authorize and prepare that road resurfacing bid?
Do you have that motion?
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any questions from the Board?
Not questions, just a comment. I just think it's important for our residents to know that we understand this is only a drop in the bucket. As we work through some of our most high-profile roads that need resurfacing, we're also in the process of developing a plan to get a better handle on the roads throughout the township that are in need of resurfacing, and also develop a multi-year plan for both funding and addressing the roads that are in need of repair, and developing a plan that will do that through some degree of consistency over the next decade or so to come.
Absolutely, thank you, Jason. Any questions from the audience? Hearing none, call for the vote. All those in favor, consent by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None, the ayes have it, motion passes. Okay, moving on quickly. Item 4 is Announcements. We have two upcoming meetings before our next board meeting, I guess. The Park and Recreation Board meeting will be February 11th. And the Planning Commission will be meeting on February 26th. Rich, do you happen to know if there's any land development items on for the February 26th Planning Commission?
Yes, there should be two land development items that will be on the agenda for February at the Planning Commission. One will be what some people are referring to as the Meadows, other people are referring to as the Shenondale application. The other one will be Audubon 5, which is the restaurant, the bank, and the hotel.
Thank you, Rich. And for the audience's information, Brian Fazio, who is our Director of Community Development and Planning, has vacated the position, and so we're in the process of, I guess, beginning to start to look for a replacement, right, Rich?
We have advertised for the position of Community Development Director. We've actually started the interview process, we've interviewed two candidates. We have two more candidates that we're gonna be interviewing tomorrow. And that brings up my next subject, which will be that we have one more item we need to address in executive session that relates to interviews.
Okay, okay, so we will go back into executive session when we're done here. Okay. Supervisors for Gene. Supervisors Sergini mentioned that the sewer authority will be meeting, we believe it's February 12th, so anybody interested in attending that? So welcome. Oh, yes, absolutely. I failed to mention that, of course, we had an executive session prior to our meeting here this evening. Okay, so moving on, comments in other business. I guess I would be remiss if I didn't mention all the extensive effort that has been going on in the township in the past month with all the snow removal and emergency service response, and of course, we're in this emergency time right now, state of emergency, I guess you could say, still, and so working through that as best as possible, and have many people working through the night, making sure our roads will be open as soon as possible and electricity turned back on, and so we appreciate the residents' patience. Board members, a few of us are going through the same thing as most of the residents, so we're trying our best to get utilities remedied as soon as possible. But the board does appreciate the efforts of the staff and the township employees in this dire time. Any other comments from board members?
Two things, just number one, to recognize the scouts who are in attendance tonight, who are no doubt working towards one of their badges, so thank you for coming out tonight, and thank you to our other die-hard folks who are out this evening. I think I would be remiss also if I didn't mention the fact that we are working on replacing our student rep to the board. I had hoped to be a little bit further along, but the events of the last week or so have slowed us down a little bit in that, but hopefully we will have someone to announce and welcome at our next meeting in February.
Yes, excellent. We also had three meetings. Staff and Supervisor Daughtry and myself and our solicitor met on the interceptor issue, so we're getting a good, I guess, hold of what the status of that project and that issue is, and so everybody's up to date and current on that issue. Also, on January 30th, there was the bi-weekly meeting at Representative Mike Verb's office for the Arcola Road Bridge Project, and that is moving along very well. Every time we meet again, we get better news, and so I believe the latest good news was the DEP permits have been issued, and so they still have three right-of-way acquisitions that need to be tidied up, I guess you could say.
That's correct.
But other than that, Bud, I don't know if you have anything to add to that?
We continue to monitor the traffic on Ridge Pike and Germantown Pike, and we have seen significant improvement. However, there still is some opportunity for improvement, as was discussed at the meeting last week, specifically with respect to installation of signage restricting right turns on red on Route 29 North. That seems to be creating some of the stack on the Collegeville side, which is then influencing what's happening on our side. So Penn Dot was in attendance and seemed to be receptive to that, according to the report that was given to me by Officer McGuffin. So again, incrementally, I think we're doing our best to reduce the pain there.
Thank you, Bud. And it does seem to be working. I know it's no cure, but every little bit helps to get the traffic in there in here. And last, a few of the supervisors attended a local official seminar, I guess it was last Wednesday? Everything's running together. That was a MACADA, which is Montgomery County Township Officials Seminar, which was very beneficial, and we learned a little bit of, you know, renewal of our responsibilities and ethical things like that, so. The board members have anything else? Okay, okay. Comments from the public? We have received a lot of compliments, also the Public Works, you know, crew and their snow removal, so we do appreciate hearing good things, as well as anything else that the township can do to improve our services here. Okay, if not, I will call for adjournment then. Actually, we'll adjourn into exec session, okay? Do I have a motion to adjourn into exec session? Do you have a motion? Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Well, adjourned.